So moving on to middle school support.
Very good. Trustees, I do understand the hour is late. We will hit the high points of our middle school intervention and instructional support, but we won't belabor it. So we know you'll ask questions in the areas you would like. I want to be clear that our approach to middle school intervention and the Performance Committee discussed this not long ago, but trustees, it's not a one size fits all across our schools. So we, trustee Gaynor had a good question yesterday about the number of students involved in the academic support class. We provided those numbers today. And of course, the first thing you notice is that they're very uneven. You know, some schools don't have the number that all of them do. I want to share that in the years prior to the pandemic, Scarlet had really led the way on implementing the additional class as an intervention, which is a pretty high level intervention, four or five days a week and an extra class period for one to all four quarters. Coming back from COVID, it is not true that all of our schools approach this the same way. And we have respected and valued their individual approaches. There is huge discussion nationally and here around at the middle level, the value of the second exploratory versus the loss of an exploratory for an intervention. Every child is unique, so that data is examined. Is the reason for the concern with performance? Is the root of that second language? Is the root of it special needs? Is the root of it just a few missing gaps? Or is it a systemic issue? So our middle school teams have been working at this, and I want you to know that we have respected their philosophical approaches and how best to keep their students learning and growing and closing the gaps, and especially paying attention to the needs of that 10 to 14 year old. I'm looking at trustee Gaynor who taught middle school as I did. It's a very specialized level. I will share that what our EDs and our principals and our teachers are doing is monitoring the progress of students, particularly during this recovery year. We don't want students put into a situation that will lower their achievement. And that's what intervention can do if it's not used precisely. So I really value that our middle school teams have taken a very thoughtful and careful look at this. And trustees, as we receive our spring data later in June, we'll be analyzing that data cross-reference with this intervention approach you see tonight. That is a very different across schools. It's different across students. As we move forward, we will be aligning. I'm sharing with you, it's not a one size fits all. I'm not sure that it should be, but we will be looking at the strategies that have been used against the growth we are seeing. And then we'll be back to you with our moving forward plan. So I just want to reassure you that it is not the same, and yet they are all doing phenomenal work. So Ms. Linden, you're going to walk us through both ELA, reading, we say ELA at secondary, and math.
That is correct. Thank you for that great introduction, Dr. Swift. They are very unique animals at each middle school. So we'll do our best to share an overview of what this looks like. We're certain there will be questions about it, but we are going to be joined in just a moment by Anne Marie Nickel Turner, who is our district department chair for mathematics. You'll recognize her. You've seen her before. And also Terry Anderson, our district department chair for ELA, who's been in this role for just a couple of years. And both are incredible leaders. We did not bring along school-based team members like we saw with Emily and Natalie, just due to the late hour. We knew we would be last tonight, and those folks are probably needing their rest for tomorrow morning. Not that you two don't, but we very much appreciate you both being with us tonight. We're going to very quickly share with you just an overall approach to academic intervention, and then we'll get into some of the middle school processes. We'll unpack both the math and the literacy. So Anne Marie and Terry will have the bulk of this presentation tonight. There are experts here this evening. I will share a little bit about partnering. We'll talk a bit about the overview of teacher practice and how we're supporting professional learning and share some next steps. So we'll jump right in. Here's a little bit about our approach today. It is about core and access to that gen ed classroom. We want to see 100% of our students in that gen ed classroom. It's a really big part of our heart around inclusion. But we know that that often is not enough for students. They may need push and support, and they may need additional. So we have something called a core plus more model. Folks who need the plus more get the plus more. Everyone gets the core. This happens through small group for that plus more differentiation in the core classroom. And oftentimes, like I said, with push-ins, with our EL teachers, our special education staff, and other support teams. The double dose, the plus more, is really skills based, and it's precise. So Dr. Swift, you mentioned that in your introduction. If we have a scalpel approach, a precision approach, then it's really meaningful and effective for students, and we don't waste time. We want them back. We want them in their elective classes and doing the things that engage them. So we really look at really effective practices and putting those in place. That is an ongoing and continuation model for us all the time. So students are also supported at the middle level with 24/7 access to tools. And we've already talked about some of those. So that's the beauty of this presentation. We'll get to whip right through some of them. So this is an overview of the support model. So most students do just fine, that 80% in our tier one core classrooms with that gen ed content expert teacher. Some students, though, are in special classes that are co-taught. They're classrooms that have two teachers. They're teachers who are working together to team. Sometimes in number two, when we see students needing that plus more model, they may be placed into a literacy-specific academic support class or a math-specific course. Sometimes students need both. And if they need both, we can't put them in two separate courses. That's what they would be doing all day long. So we do a special combined literacy and math support class for those students. And then we monitor and monitor and monitor. So here's the process. These two team members will talk to you about being data-driven. The teacher involved part, I cannot emphasize enough. And trustee Gaynor, I hear you when you say, you know, it's great when we hear from teachers. They are deeply involved in this process, how it looks, who goes there. They're part of the decision-making process for how students get their needs met and constantly checking in. The communication with families is big, because when you have a plus more model, it means sometimes students have to give up something else they could be taking during that time. That's a give and take with families. So that communication is really important. And it leads to bullet number three, which is balancing those experiences, because some of those pieces are really joy. That's what gets kids out of bed and gets them into school every day. We don't want to take those away. That could have an adverse effect. So there's a balance that we have to have when we approach this. And then, of course, we talked about monitoring. So we'll jump to Anne Marie Nickel Turner. She's going to talk a little bit about data monitoring. And thank you, Andrew, for managing the slide deck today and clicking into an example here for Anne Marie.
Welcome, and thank you for having us speak to you tonight. We really appreciate the time to be able to share some of our ongoing work with you. What you're seeing here is a real dataset of students. We've removed names and identifying information. But this is to give you an idea of the breadth of the data we are looking at. This sheet will continue off to the right, quite a few more columns. What we've done is both for ELA and math, we have created a collection of data that we think brings important points in for us to take a look at. For this group of middle school students, we're looking at current fall NWEA, winter NWEA, last year's Mstep, the number of Delta Math screener standards that were marked for intervention for some students for fifth graders. It's the percent of mastered standards on their elementary report card. All of those pieces come together to give us that that number that's in column H. And that is a way for us to kind of look at which students are likely to need some, the conversation about what intervention is appropriate. Are there other factors that need to be considered? We have a color coding system that we've developed to help staff and counselors kind of scan through this data quickly. Students that are marked in orange, we know we need to look at more closely, because we really don't have what we consider to be enough data points to make a decision. That, so teachers will also be involved in those conversations. Students that are in yellow or in red have higher numbers, and we really need to take a look at the skills those students have, where their gaps are, and try to think carefully with those students and families about what the best plan forward is for them to get some very skill-specific intervention. I'm not sure this exact example has any red students on it, to be honest with you. They may be more of the students going from eighth to ninth grade. So we're using kind of this large collection of data to help us really be thoughtful and look at multiple reasons why a student may need additional attention as we look at the whole child and where we need to go to help service them in math. And there are similar documents for ELA. Terry can discuss with you in a few minutes. I think we can go back to the slides. Thank you. This chart is in the slides for you, so you can see how the data is put together. We do look at that Delta Math, those screener numbers, and we'll talk about that more in a few minutes. They get points for the Mstep or PSAT for the students going to high school, district common assessments, the NWEA, and then the grades, either middle school or elementary. So it really is a broad collection of the data. And for most students, we have most of this data. And that's why a few of those students are marked in orange, because they are lacking a wealth of data points for us to consider. We have some guiding principles for math and ELA that look very similar. Number one is that all students need to be exposed to that wonderful core math tier one instruction, looking at how we can accelerate students with that robust instruction. Number two is that any intervention needs to meet students at their instructional level. Three is that student, the teachers have to equal the knowledge of how to make the greatest impact. Many of our teachers at secondary were not trained in some of the number sense and the fact fluency knowledge that our elementary counterparts were schooled in when they went through their university experiences. So some of our secondary people need some additional skills and expertise in those areas. When you look at number four, for some students, intensive intervention cannot be done just in the core math class, because they need that core plus more that Ms. Linden explained to you earlier. Our goal, number five, is to make sure that students intervention as quickly as possible. So we want them to be in for the amount of time that's needed, and then back out in their other courses. And six is about teams trying to look at student need so that they can make sure that we are addressing the appropriate things for students. There are components to our math support classes. We're trying to strengthen the tier one instruction. So that's very important first. We're going to, teachers are going to work on customizing instruction to fill any gaps that they see, pre-teach concepts, and carefully monitor student growth. We use resources like the Delta Math RTI program and the Dreambox material to support classroom instruction. And then there's another component that we've pulled in. It's a Stanford University short course called How to Learn Math. And it's about 20-minute chunks of time. There are some short instructional videos with some really young, positive, role model type folks talking about how they learn math and some of the struggles and how they've met them, and trying to work on that mindset piece that we know is really so important. So that little video is going to be paired with in-classroom conversation about those. And it's a free course. It's available to everyone. You could take it, and you could have your students take it, too. Delta Math RTI is something that was developed at the Ottawa ISD on the west side of the state, and it's co-funded by the Michigan Department of Education, which is a group that works on intervention for mathematics for students that have more complex disabilities and intervention needs. The Delta Math RTI plan is there's a screener, which can be done online or on paper. They screen six to eight of the key foundational standards for a core. So if a student is a math seven, it will, it will screen for things, standards in math, five and six. From each of those standards, there is a set of sequenced lessons that are already put in place. Those lessons are based on that IES Practices Guide for Assisting Struggling Learners. That's the research from the What Works Clearinghouse and the US Department of Education. And then with those potentially eight lessons for each standard, they're 30-minute lessons. There's progress monitoring every day so that students who can demonstrate mastery at the end of day three don't need to finish the other days of instruction on that skill. They progress monitor every day for eight days on that skill so that we can make sure that they really learn the material. There is a video, and I know you could look at it another time. It's getting late. There are videos that model for teachers and for students how to do some of the work that's there. So these are some sample problems. They're about two minutes.
This London, I think we have a request.
So Anne Marie, we have a request to watch a little bit of this one. So Andrew, I don't know that we prepped you, but could you attempt to play that one for us for a sec? Thank you.
We have a volume issue. Little volume issue, but we'll get it.
If they combine the remaining licorice, how much do they have left altogether? First, it is important to know what the problem is about. This problem is about Annie and her friend eating string licorice. Second, I need to determine what I need to find. I need to find how much they have left after each of them ate some. Third, I need to determine what I know. I know that they each began with one foot of licorice. And after they both ate some, Annie had three fourths of a foot left, and her friend had two thirds of a foot left. Fourth, I need to figure out what I can try. I am going to try using fraction strips and a number line to add three fourths and two thirds. I am going to fold my fraction template so that the fourths are visible as the bottom row. Since Annie had three fourths of a foot left, I will use the fraction strips to mark three fourths on the number line. There's one fourth, two fourth, three fourth. To add two thirds of a foot, I will fold the template so that the thirds are the bottom row, and then add two of them.
Would you like to keep watching? Okay, certainly.
So here's the total, and I see that it's more than one, but I'm not sure what the fractional part this mark is at. To find the fractional part, I remember that I can use a denominator, a common denominator. Since four is not a multiple of three, I can multiply them together to get twelfths. So here's my one. It looks like there's one, two, three, four. This is at the five twelve mark.
I think for the sake of time, can we move, move, move on? Okay. And we can watch this on our own time.
This video would likely not be shown to students. It is there to help teachers prepare for the skills. It can also be used with students who are absent. But the lessons with the Delta Math RTI are very teacher-led. They are not at all technology-based lessons. So this is very careful. I do, you do, we do lots of very explicit instruction on these skills. That particular lesson in this sequence is at the very beginning of the eight-day sequence. So it's, it's very carefully visual pieces, lots of vocabulary reinforcement for students. It's going to be some of those really intricate skills where they're going to go through how to find that common denominator, et cetera. So that is one of the pieces that's used. So, so far, we've looked at the how to use math course very quickly, and at the Delta Math RTI. The third thing that's used in math support is Dreambox. And I know you've heard a little bit about Dreambox and other presentations. Dreambox in math support is used a lot with correlation to NWEA score. So teachers can put in the student NWEA score, and Dreambox will assign them a lesson to do based on that score. They can have a second assignment based on IEP goal or upcoming content in class. And then they will also have the other six lessons that will help move them along the learning trajectory. So it will be more independent practice. In most of the classrooms that are using the three components, it's done in a station model. So the teacher's doing the Delta Math RTI with the students in small group setting, and the other students may be working on Dreambox or on some other pre-teaching material for their upcoming instruction. There's also practice that's recommended, both in games for every skill in the Delta Math RTI sequence. There's other online practice and online virtual manipulative practice. Our buildings do also have intervention kits with the materials to teach those lessons. So there's some manipulative materials that have been purchased for buildings. I think we can go to the next slide. We played about the first minute of this for the trustees for Ms. Schmidt and Ms. Muhammad when we came in. So it might be helpful to see one minute. This is an eighth grade lesson, and the student's working on scientific notation. So you can see a student thinking through a Dreambox lesson. And maybe just a minute, Mr. Cooley, please.
All right. Today, we're going to play the scientific notation. Let's do it. All right. Oh, so we're good. We just do this. Go one. Boom. What?
You are only off by one value.
Maybe, oh, oh, I see. Zero, bro. We got it. Zero. I see. This is different. Okay. And we just got to do. All right. I saw how that worked. Okay. That makes a lot more sense. The B was not zero. It was not stating at that. It was stating where it should be. That's also zero. Wow. So I'm just, my thought process here is, I don't really know. I guess it's more of a, I didn't get it at first, right? But I got it at this point. I didn't get this point. I got this. I know what this was. Ooh.
All right. Thank you for sharing that quick video. Appreciate it. I think we can hand off to Terry Anderson. Anne Marie, thank you so much for walking us through that. Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Swift, everyone listening, if people are still out there listening this late. I wanted to talk a little to you, first of all, about our guiding principles for literacy intervention. When I began this position last year, I was given a directive by the department chairs at the building level. And they said literacy intervention needs to be a primary area of focus for our work as a department. And so I spent a lot of time last year, and I continue to listen and learn from them, from our teachers, from, from our secondary literacy experts, our reading specialists. We have a couple at the secondary level, and using really studying current research on the best practices for literacy intervention, including information by expert Sharon Vaughn from the University of Texas. So we begin, really, the guiding principles are the culmination of all of that work. And so, so this was, these were co-developed. And I, we begin every meeting that we have, whether it be literacy intervention training, or looking at data with these principles and refer to where we are. So they really help steer us. And we're working to, for everyone at all levels to internalize them. So the first one is, Anne Marie, they're very similar to the math. And that is that every student needs to be exposed to that grade level core English curriculum. Number two is that we need to meet students at their instructional level. If we don't do both, grade level, instructional level, the gap grows bigger. And that's why it's so important that there be both. Three is that intensive foundational literacy intervention skills cannot be taught in those core English classes. It requires one-on-one instruction by the teacher. You can't teach phonics when you're trying to teach the theme of a book. It has to be done in that one-on-one situation. And as Anne Marie mentioned, our secondary English ed programs don't include the instruction, learning how to teach foundational literacy skills. It just simply doesn't happen. And so we have a responsibility to give teachers at the secondary level the skills that they need to teach those foundational literacy skills. And that means that we have to do this in an ongoing way, providing support from colleagues. And finally, building teams should discuss data and appropriate level of support for individual students. And that is so that, to ensure that students are placed in their least restrictive environment, and also to make sure that kids aren't falling through the cracks. And that's something we want to prevent. So we are, as Anne Marie mentioned, very similar to math. We work in the spring on gathering some preliminary intervention data. And we use multiple indicators, because anyone can have a bad day on a particular assessment. And we know there are many reasons why a student might not do well on one particular assessment. So we use the most recent data that we have for multiple indicators to try to determine whether a student may need the support. This is a starting place, and I want to emphasize that, because we don't want students in an intervention without data to support that decision. This is a collaborative process. We need our teachers as experts. We need their input. No standardized measure can capture what our teachers know about students, through their classroom research, through their observations. And so we're And so we're really working in our department in collaboration with our English department chairs, our literacy intervention teachers, principals to really try to systematize this process. You heard Bill Harris talk a little bit about systematizing that MTSS work, and this is critical. And particularly at key intervals where you know, the transition from elementary to middle, from middle to high school, where that communication needs to be improved to try to do this in a, using the structures that we already have in place to ensure that students are given the appropriate level of support. And again, that no students are falling through the cracks. And the next slide talks about, so if a student has, using those multiple indicators, four or more indicators and a teacher is recommending core plus more, then what we want to see is we want to see that student taking that core English class, right? Because they need that grade level curriculum. And then we want to see that more. We want to see that extra level of support where they're getting that intensive foundational skill work. I asked Sarah Andrew Vaughn, one of our literacy intervention teachers at Scarlet to give us a little flavor. I wanted them to come, but if they had conferences before, and of course, this is really late at night and they have to teach. So I wanted to try to capture what goes on in Power Hour. And so she gave me this little snippet to share with you tonight. Quote, blended learning allows me to target the specific next skill each student is ready to learn. Power Up presents lessons to students while providing me with information about their accuracy. Using that, I am able to plan lessons for each student in the tier two class. This approach sticks. Students learn a concept and I come in to help them understand how those foundational patterns work and when to use them to understand the complex texts they use in their core classes, end quote. A lot of our work this year as a department has focused on the training piece. Because you know, we mentioned how secondary teachers don't really haven't been equipped with that in their programs. And so we focused a lot of the training. We had a series of three sessions in the fall, which involved a lot of coordinating, teacher subs, you name it. We started with the three that are listed on the slide, conferring with skill progressions. We enlisted the help of our elementary experts for that. We did a session on using Lexia Power Up and how to integrate that into the classroom alongside other strategies. For example, you know, how do you use blended learning and how do you set up group, small group instruction? And what are you doing while the kids are on Power Up? So to help them see what this looks like, because it's, it's one thing to have training from a Lexia rep. It's another thing to have a teacher lead you through, a teacher who has an intervention class, show you what this can look like and how they're using the platform. And then the third session was on feedback and monitoring and how they can use that data to provide some formative assessment tools and monitor how kids are doing. And I actually was just at Scarlet today and Connie Ray, who gave the quote at the top of this page, was working with kids on monitoring their own use of the platform. And, and so that was exciting to see that on today of all days. So even in the middle school years, Connie said, it is imperative for teachers to have the training necessary to address foundational reading skills and phonics instruction. This training was so successful and I know it was in large part because it was teachers who are teaching literacy intervention classes doing that. Because they could say, yeah, this works. This doesn't work. This is what I did. This is what I tweaked. This is what I changed. And so the teachers were very, very satisfied, so much so that they said, can we have more training? And I said, I said, yeah, see what I can do. And we were able to, the district has been very supportive in providing that training to the, to our teachers. And so in May, we'll be doing another session where we really look at the Institute for Educational Science Reading Intervention Practice Guide and the four practices that they recommend that are research based on building decoding, fluency comprehension and using what Sharon Vaughn calls a stretch text. And so we're going to build the training and working with Connie and Sarah to do another session in the spring. I do want to say that in addition to all of this in-house training, we did offer the opportunity for Brain Spring Structures Level One or Gillingham Training. And several of our teachers have taken us up on that to all, to just again, build those skills and so that they feel more equipped to do that. And of course, we're taking advantage of all the opportunities that are free from the state that trustee Schmidt had mentioned earlier in one of the previous presentations. So we're continuing to share those opportunities as they come up with our teachers. And then the, my last slide here is to tell you that a lot of times that students that struggle with literacy are the same students that struggle with math. And of course, we can't have them in these intervention classes all day. So we do have a vision for combined literacy and math support. And to be co-taught by math and a math and literacy teacher and doing kind of a station rotation model, using those blended learning tools and direct instruction. Some of that is paper and pencil. Some of that's using whiteboards and whisper conferences and all of these wonderful strategies that teachers are learning. Or really working on that foundational skills and teachers are very much the decision makers in this scenario. This is taken concurrently with their core English and math courses, just as we said, the academic lit or math course is. And then I guess the last thing I wanted to share was a quote, again, since they couldn't be here, Laura Hurst, our Scarlet Special Education Department Chair and Teacher Consultant. When I ask people for quotes, she said it, she emailed back right away. And this is what she had to say. Quote, "I love the intentionality around working on students' IEP goals. We are working on students' individual IEP goals each and every day that we are in Power Hour." And that's what they call their, their support class there. Instead of waiting on the curriculum and how we can weave it into the classroom environment and just kind of waiting for something to happen, they have more agency and control. So that's, that's it for me on my part.
Like that. So we're going to wrap. We just have a few slides regarding partnering. You've, you've heard this before. And our SEL team already talked about the ways we partner with our community centers. So I won't belabor that, but I do want to thank these individuals, Anne Marie and Tony Stam and others who do go to the centers and regularly train and support. We already talked about communication and how important the 24/7 access is. So we'll keep sharing that and keep encouraging the use of those tools. And we're going to whip through these very quickly, Andrew. These next two slides, there's a slide on mathematics and supports for families to click into. And following this, a slide on literacy on demand and how families might, might utilize those. We'll continue to share these directly with families, but we wanted to highlight them here. And then finally, Terry talked a lot about the great work going on in literacy and the same is going on in the mathematics areas. But this is an ongoing professional learning model. And in response to what teachers have shared that they want to see and what we know works for students. So these are some of the areas that we'll continue to provide professional learning on. You've already heard Terry talk about Brain Spring or in Gillingham based structures, the letters training that I know we were a little familiar with in the Delta Math RTI and Advantage Math. And finally, we're going to talk about next steps. So we want to continue to structure those beyond the school day supports for small group instruction. We've talked about the importance of high impact tutoring happening. We'd like to see a model that provides that funding and support to do that work. We want to increase the consistency and the support for interventions in ways that meet the school-based team's needs better. We always want to introduce more ways that fifth grade staff can hand off to sixth grade staff in the transition so that no student is lost in the in that transition process. And we've talked a lot about the professional learning. So we'll continue to bring you updates on that. Thank you for your patience this evening. We know it's late, but we are honored to be here and appreciate your questions.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much, team. Thank you.